I'll behave next to the camera.
Could you, could you just? You might need to steal a chair. Oh, this is. He's got two openings coming forward. Are there two, are there gonna be two openings?
Yep.
Mary Ann?
Bob.
Oh, he is terrified, I didn't know that.
Yep.
Oh, wow.
I think two people have taken out papers.
Greetings. I would like to call this special Budget Town Meeting of September 3rd, 2020 to order. Our first article is to choose a moderator to preside and preside at said meeting. Do I hear a nomination for moderator?
I nominate William Dale.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motions have been made and seconded. Do I have a mo- motion that nomination ceases?
They'll move.
Mm-hmm.
They'll move.
And a second?
Second.
Motions have been made and seconded that nomination ceases. I now at that three written dialed stats for the nominated moderator. Would anyone else want to cast a ballot for moderator? I declare voting closed. We have three votes for William Dale. I ask that our moderator, William Dale, come forward to perform in. All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, William Dale.
I, William Dale.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
I, William Dale.
I, William Dale.
Do swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me as moderator.
The duties incumbent upon me as moderator.
For the September 3rd, 2020 Special Budget Town Meeting.
For the September 3rd, 2020 Special Budget Town Meeting.
According to the Constitution and the law of the state of Maine.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state of Maine. Good evening, everybody. I'm Bill Dale and I'm going to be the moderator for tonight's meeting. Because of our social distancing and facial requirements, if at any time you can't hear me, just wave your purple vote card. And I'll understand that that's okay. We are gonna ask Madam Clerk, I think we're gonna ask speakers to come up to the microphone. I know it's a little bit of a pain, but all things considered, with everybody wearing masks, you're gonna have to. Again, if you can't hear me, wave your purple card. We will be using tonight, as most towns do, the MMA main moderator manual if questions come up. I have been told that in the past, some moderators have gone too fast. So I am trying to go very slow. We will try and be expeditious, but I don't wanna call a vote before everybody's had a chance to speak up. All right, so wave your hand if you look like you're going too fast. I'll slow down if we want to hear what everybody has to say. And when we get to the point of voting on matters, do so by raising your purple card. That way we'll know you're a registered voter and not just an interested citizen. If at any time I make a procedural call on some issue, if seven or more people object, we will then have a vote of the House. And the vote of the House will decide what you wanna do with a particular matter if seven more people disagree with how I've called it. I'll try not to make a mistake, but if I do, you have that check. With that, everybody, and you can focus on the back of your hand now. I feel like I should be selling AT&T mobile phones. Okay. Article 2, to see what some town will vote to raise and appropriate for general government wages. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion on Article 2 as printed in the ballot? In the warrant, excuse me. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 2 as printed in the warrant, please signify by raising your purple voting cards. All those opposed? The I-7, who passed Article 2. Article 3, to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for insurance and benefits. Selectment recommendations on the face of the warrant. Budget Committee recommendation. Also, is there a motion to approve Article 3 as printed in the warrant?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion on Article 3 as printed in the warrant? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 3, so indicate. Those opposed? You have passed Article 3 as printed in the warrant. Article 4, to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for town administration. Again, the selectmen's detailed recommendations on the face of the warrant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve Article 3, excuse me, Article 4, is there a second?
There's a.
Any discussion on Article 4? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 4, so indicate. Those in opposition? Passed Article 4, it's been in the warrant. Article 5, to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for legal Selectment recommendations and Budget Committee recommendations on the face of the ballot. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved to approve Article 5, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on Article 5 as printed in the warrant? Seeing none, all those in favor, so indicate by raising your cards. Those in opposition? You have passed Article 5. Article 6, to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for protection. Selectment recommendations and Budget Committee recommendations on the face of the warrant. Is there a motion to approve Article 6?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article 6 as printed in the warrant? Seeing none, all those in favor, so indicate. Those in opposition? You have passed Article 6 as printed in the warrant. Article 7, to see if a town will vote to appropriate the dog licensing fees or penalties collected during fiscal year 2020-21, with the exception of the recording fee that must be retained by the municipal clerk pursuant to state law as additional payment to the animal control officer who serves as renter to the town. Is there a motion on Article 7?
So moved. Second.
Is there a second? Moved in second. Any discussion on Article 7 as printed in the warrant?
It's not printed in the warrant. It's not printed in summary.
Um, Madam Manager, you help us out on Article 7. What is the Selectment recommendation?
They recommend a purple.
There is a dis- there is a set of them.
Article 7 does not have a specific dollar amount in it, rather it has a Selectment recommendation to approve the text of Article 7.
Oh, can you read the text?
Article 7, to see if the town will vote to approve all dog licensing fees and penalties collected during fiscal year 2020-21, with the exception of a recording fee that must be retained by the municipal clerk pursuant to state law as additional payment to animal control officer who serves as renter to the town. Madam Clerk, do you have the?
Please make sure that you're following along.
We have a plan.
There's an answer.
Explain the torture. The actual meeting warrant is included in your town report. It's in there. The handout that you received is an explanation of the warrant articles. And because this one was deemed self-explanatory, it might not have been in there. Does anyone not have the actual town meeting warrant in their town report?
Okay, everybody, we're gonna vote on Article 7. Is there a motion to approve Article 7 as printed in the warrant? Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the merits of Article 7? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 7 as printed on the face of the warrant, so indicate. Those in opposition? You pass Article 7. Article 8, to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for harbor and water. The Selectment recommendations and the Budget Committee recommendations on the face of the warrant. Is there a motion to approve Article 8?
So moved.
It's moved, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on Article 8? If not, all those in favor of Article 8, so indicate by raising your purple card. Those in opposition? You pass Article 8 as printed in the warrant, Article 9. See if the town will vote to appropriate up to $3,973 from the vote excise slash morgue fee, marine resources joint revenue account for the harbor master stipend and reimbursement slash expenses. You have the Selectment recommendation approved. Is there a motion on Article 9?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article 9? If not, all those in favor, so indicate. Those in opposition? You pass Article 9 as printed in the warrant. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $18,648 from the vote excise morgue fee, marine resources joint revenue account for the shelf floor orders, wages and expenses and town boat expenses. Selectment recommendation approved. Is there a motion on Article 10?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article 10 as printed in the warrant? Seeing none, all those in favor, so indicate. All those in opposition? You pass Article 10. Article 11, to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for sanitation. Selectment recommendation and Budget Committee recommendation on the face of the warrant. Is there a motion to approve Article 11?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article 11?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am? Can you stand, stand up? You yell out, we'll see if we can hear you.
So if everything in the warrant is passed, what would the mil rate be?
Same as last year.
And what was it last year?
Ten fifty.
Ten five, thank you.
Just to hear, everybody heard the lady's question. She wanted to know if everything that passed in the warrant is printed, what was the mil rate being, will it be the same as last year? The answer is it will be the same as last year. It will not be increased and the mil rate will be ten dollars. And the mil rate is ten dollars and fifty cents per thousand. I'll send to your question. Any further comments or questions on Article 11? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 11 as printed in the warrant, so indicate. Those in opposition? You pass Article 11. Article 12, to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the garbage-to-garden composting program. Selectmen recommend and budget committee recommendation on the face of the warrant. Is there a motion for Article 12?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Article 12. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Can you come up to the mic?
I'd like to hear a little bit more about this.
Can you go to the mic and give us your name?
I'm Mary Hansen. I'd like to hear a little bit about this program, how it's evolved.
Okay, question has been raised from the floor about the garbage-to-garden program. Would the manager, Selectmen, respond?
We voted this last year, and there have been compost receptacles at the back of parking lot at the town hall. They've been used extensively. And people seem to like the program, so we thought we should continue with it. It's a composting program that allows us to compost meat and paper and things that are not, not usually composted and whole composting products.
Is there any other questions, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Article 12? Yes, sir.
Related to him, I'm Robert Hansen. You said this paper and stuff that's not usually, and it says garbage-to-garden. Can you not hear me?
Yeah, I did. It's things like paper plates that you could normally compost. So I can pay for it.
Do you have to put the grease in anyway? Do they have to be shredded or?
No, you just bring them in and dump them.
Including your pizza boxes?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Deborah Anderson. So how does the community get compost from this program?
I think we go get it. I'm sorry, the compost committee isn't here. We got very little back. Very little compost back. And what this does is provide a service to the community for things that would not be recycled through our global recycling program.
And the compost that the town is entitled to, which is, we're entitled to take compost between April and October of each year, depending on how much waste that we put into the system. The town would generally use that for town properties. But.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. In the future, if we continue this program and we have a surplus of composts, then the goal would be to start giving it out to residents on a first come, first served basis.
Where is the company that provides the actual compost?
Is there additional information on the town website?
No.
Not on this?
There is additional information under Waste and Recycling on the website. We also have pamphlets and brochures at Town Hall.
Any more questions or comments on Article 11, excuse me, Article 12, for garbage-to-garden? Any more questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 12, no warrant, so indicate by raising your voting card. Those in opposition? You pass Article 12. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate up to $130,150 and to appropriate for fiscal year 2020-2021 motor vehicle excise tax revenue for public works for a total appropriation of $610,150 as detailed below on the face of the warrant. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article 13 as printed in the warrant? If not, all those in favor, so indicate. Those in opposition? You pass Article 13. Article 14, if, excuse everybody, when the manager and the Selectmen responded, are you folks all able to hear both of them?
Yeah.
Again, wave your card if you can hear. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $219,000 for the Rose Capital Improvement Fund Reserve Account. Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article 14? Seeing none, all those in favor of 14, so indicate. Those in opposition? You have passed Article 14. Article 15, to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for cemetery. Selectmen recommend $300. Budget Committee concurs. Is there a motion on Article 15?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article 15 as printed in the warrant? Seeing none, all those in favor, so indicate. Those in opposition? To vote, we have passed Article 15. Article 16, to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for community agencies. The Selectment recommendation and printed on the face of the warrant, Budget Committee concurs. Is there a motion for approval for 16?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 16?
Why is it so low?
A lady from the audience, Autumn Swanson, all right, that number is so low. Madam Manager, Madam Chairman?
The, the agencies request these amounts of money, so we responded to their requests. The one that we did feel needed to be increased, the Budget Committee interviewed the folks from the food bank before COVID. And they had asked for fifteen hundred dollars. And at our final budget meetings, we agreed that we needed to increase that. So we were asking for $3,000 for the food bank. Prior to COVID, the food pantry had doubled their request on the double request app, our utilization there. And that was prior to COVID, so we doubled the budget to certainly increase that.
Any more questions or comments on Article 16?
Well, I don't have time. I just don't know. There is also a West Bath Food Bank, or is that a fridge?
Question from the audience, is there a separate West Bath Food Bank as opposed to Bath and Burns?
No. The school contributes to the, to this food bank, the bathroom. Am I correct about that?
We do have a fresh fruits and vegetable program and a food bank for members of our school or anyone in the community who needs it, but.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
The school does have a fruits and vegetables program where those items are donated to the school and we make them available to members of the community. We also have a small food bank that primarily serves the students, but it certainly would be open to anybody in the general public as well.
And that's with, that's in partnership with Good Shepherd Food Bank.
Any other questions or comments on Article 16? Yes, sir.
When, when is, is.
I meant, I apologize, but I don't wear my glasses because they fog up, so I can't say. Oh, you'll get them another time.
I'm fogging up too. When is this food distributed to the general public?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's generally during school hours, but certainly we'd make, we'd make accommodations for someone after hours if need be. But it's generally available during school hours.
During school hours, at the school?
Yes, I believe there is some after-school coverage as well. We have that information.
At the school.
At the school, yes, I'm sorry, yes, at the school.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not the food pantry.
Pardon me?
That's not the food pantry.
I'm asking about the food bank.
Yeah. Well, the school was separate. The bathroom, food pantry, soup kitchen. I'm not sure what the hours are. It was Tuesday and Thursdays for meals. And I'm not sure what was the technical, but that's different from school. School is a much smaller operation.
Okay, I got you.
We all sat here on Article 16. Any more questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, so indicate. Those in opposition? You pass Article 16. Article 17, to see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the patent-free library. Selectment recommendation and Budget Committee recommendation on the face of the ballot. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second, we're passing Article 17. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Carrie, I was wondering, how long does a patent-free library can shut down to the public?
It's open.
It is open?
It is open.
It's offering full services?
Not full services, it's gradually opening. I think the last couple of weeks, they're now having, I think they're up, but it's, it's been long. But yes, it is open.
So they've been closed since the beginning of all this, and they're just recently opening?
Yeah.
So the thirty-four, seven, twenty-five is the same as last year, correct?
It's two percent.
Even though the services have been less this year?
Two percent increase.
I'd like to add something, if I may.
Yes, ma'am. Will you come to the mic and identify yourself, please?
I'm Mary Lee Wilson. I served on the committee that studied where and how we should receive our library services here in the town of West Bath. We produced a report two years ago. That report is available for anybody that wants to see it at this town office. It overwhelmingly did suggest that we keep with patent-free library. That was the best value at the time. Furthermore, while the library was closed for several months, there were still people providing services within that building. You need to keep equipment going. The infrastructure taken care of. They were still purchasing items for the collection, de-assessing items for the collection. And so, and they were also preparing to reopen, which was quite a process. They have been open for more than a couple of weeks. I've been getting books that I can pick up curbside from them. So, yes, it was those, yes, it was going to the building.
Yeah, perfect person.
But I still think, you know, the lights were on, unfortunately, some of them had, they had to heat it. So it's hard to get around that. So please give that some thought when you're considering this subject.
Ms. Wilson? Yes, sir.
I'm Mary Mear. I just want to say this. I know there's been a lot of controversy about the capable library, but the tag sheet that was passed out tonight clears up a lot of those questions. So if you haven't seen it, look at it.
And I apologize for not recognizing people that have my license. I'll try.
Can you review what she said because I don't think some people got that.
What did I say?
Yeah. Did everyone catch that?
Did everybody catch Mary Lee?
Mary Lee.
Mary Lee. Did everybody catch Mary Lee's comments at the mic? Did you want her to repeat?
No.
No, I was talking to Jane.
Everybody catch Jane's comments?
No.
No.
Jane, can you stand up and repeat your question?
So there was a sheet passed out tonight by someone, I don't know who it was, but they're on the, they're on the library board of trustees. And it gives you a lot of answers to the questions that have been made and asked several times, several years in the past about what we're paying for and how they decide what to pay. If you have the lady over here, thank you, has these sheets. If you haven't seen them, read them because they give a lot of information. It makes me feel a whole lot better.
Well, anybody in my watchroom is a pair of, if they're really not, they're not.
Everybody up to speed on Jane's comments and on this lady's handouts? Any more questions or comments on this article? Article 17. All those in favor of Article 17, so indicate. Those opposed? You pass Article 17 as printed in the warrant. Article 18, to see if the town will vote every four or remaining appropriated but unextended funds at the end of fiscal year 2019-2020 from the General Assistance, Ambulance, General Road, MDOG Local Road Assistance and Marine Resources Harbor and Waterways Account, provided that funds are used for the same purposes as originally designated.
So moved. Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion on Article 18? Seeing none, all those in favor, so indicate by raising your cards. Those in opposition? You pass Article 18. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to appropriate an amount not exceeding $600,000 from unassigned fund balance, sometimes in a surplus, to purchase a new fire truck and related apparatus.
So moved.
It's seconded. Is there a discussion on Article 19? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Those opposed? You pass Article 19. Article 20. I was asking if you both walk and chew gum at the same time. And I'm sure you're attending, and I'm not quite able to mask this mask in my eye, so I can't do it at the same time. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to transfer $50,000 from unassigned fund balance surplus to be targeted in the Long-Term Capital Improvement Fund.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on Article 20? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate. Those in opposition? Pass Article 20 as printed in the warrant. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to apply any anticipated revenue not otherwise dedicated for specific purposes to reduce the fiscal year 2020-21 tax commitment. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on Article twenty-one. Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, pass Article twenty-one. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to apply unassigned fund balance surplus in excess of twelve percent of the total non-capital expenditures for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and not otherwise appropriated, to reduce the fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one tax commitment.
Move.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article twenty-one? All those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, pass Article twenty-two. Twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the payment of tax abatement approved by the selecting assessors from property tax overlay or if necessary, from unassigned fund balance. Is there a motion on Article twenty-three?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article twenty-three? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, you pass Article twenty-three. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to fix the date of October fifteenth, two thousand twenty, as the date when fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one taxes shall become due and payable.
Move.
And charge eight percent on unpaid taxes after that date, is there a motion?
I'll move that back to.
Second.
It moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion on Article twenty-four. Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate. Those in opposition, pass Article twenty-four. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid with the town on a beta taxes at four percent for fiscal year twenty, twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion on Article twenty-five. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-five, please so indicate. Those in opposition, pass Article twenty-five. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes known as they shall be payable on any prepayment. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second on Article twenty-six, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. In opposition, pass Article twenty-six. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to direct the treasurer to waive or close their any real property tax from the mortgage, if they determine that the course of action will be in the best interest of the town. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article twenty-seven? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of Article twenty-seven, please so indicate. Those in opposition, pass Article twenty-seven. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to dispose of town-owned personal property with a value of over five hundred dollars, deemed by the selectmen to be surplus, on such terms as the selectmen deem advisable. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article twenty-eight? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, you pass Article twenty-eight. Twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to sell and dispose of all tax-acquired property held by the town on such terms as they deem advisable, and to exit few quickly needs for such property, except that the selectmen shall not, selectmen shall use the special sale process required under thirty-six MRSA section nine forty-three C for qualifying homestead property if they choose to sell it to anyone other than the former owners. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It moved in second for passage of Article twenty-nine, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, pass Article twenty-nine. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to apply for and accept a state, federal, or other grant on behalf of the town for mental purposes, including when necessary, the authority to sign grant contracts, documents, and/or other paperwork, and accept the conditions for the company to grant funds, and to appropriate and extend such funds to the authorized purposes, as the selectmen deem in the best interest of the town during the upcoming fiscal year. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It moved in second to approve Article thirty, put it in the warrant, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, you pass Article thirty. Thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to accept conditional or unconditional gifts of real property, provided that no single gift will obligate the town with current liabilities that tow one thousand dollars or more per year, as determined by the selectmen. Is there a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion on Article thirty-one. Seeing none, all those in favor, yes, yes, Jane. Yeah, I'm trying not to, yes, please.
I'd just like an explanation of it.
Um, Madam Manager, Madam Chairman, respond to the lady's question about the purpose of Article thirty-one.
If somebody wants to donate something to the town, it's authorized us to accept it? Yeah.
For example, if somebody lent or offered you five hundred dollars to build a swimming pool, but it's going to cost you a hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain it, you'd have to come to a town meeting. So that's, that's what the limit is, if there's some little condition, that's five hundred bucks a year to be it, but a new swimming pool could be five hundred thousand dollars a year. Any further questions or comments on Article thirty-one?
Nobody has offered to give us a swimming pool. Turn to the world library.
Further questions or comments on Article thirty-one? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, pass Article thirty-one. Thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to accept or reject donations of personal property, and/or to accept or reject gifts of money to the various accounts of the town for the ensuing fiscal year, and to appropriate those money donated for specific purposes. Is there a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on Article thirty-two? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, you pass Article thirty-two. Thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to maintain and exercise if appropriate its right to take River Karen from the New Meadows Lake, consistent with the terms and conditions specified at the March nineteen seventy-seven town meeting. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article thirty-three? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, pass Article thirty-three. Thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to maintain a fishway on Wouldnen Gans Lake, did I get that right?
Yes.
I won't start again. On Wouldnen Gans Lake, and to exercise its rights to take River Karen, and according to the terms and conditions specified at the June nineteen eighty-eight town meeting, and an agreement with the city of Bath and the town of Pittsburgh. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion on Article thirty-four? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. In opposition, you pass Article thirty-four. Thirty-five, shall ordinance entitled two thousand twenty amendments to the land use ordinance regarding the official land use ordinance district and overlay zone map and relate the text, shall be enacted. Is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion on Article thirty-five? Yes, sir, and then I'll get to the.
We have a little.
Please, you can give us your name first, please. Your name.
Mary Lee Hansen.
Mr. Hansen.
Stand closer to the mic.
And, uh, I'd like to hear from the panel, what's behind this change, and, uh, uh, the name has turned, we're doing here.
Darlene? Sure, Mr. Hansen, I can do that.
Can you give us your name, please?
Darlene Esteban, Chair of the Board.
Chairman of the Planet Board?
Yes. Mary Lee, can you hear me?
I can hear you, it's amazing, thank you.
So, um, the amendment, the Article thirty-five, we're doing a couple of little things, there was a handout, a two-sided handout, a front row map, did anybody grab that? Yes, thank you. So, um, what we're doing is a couple of things, this is, um, the zoning language for business and commercial, we made a clarification within the language, um, because offsets to the commercial property are off of the road, and, and so we made the clarification that, um, so if it's offset three hundred fifty feet from the road back, this commercial, then behind that is residential, we clarified the fact that we're going from the center of the road, not the edge of the road, not the right way, but the center of the road, so it's easier for the CEO or anybody to measure. So that's all throughout here a little bit, if you look at that handout, um, another thing that we did is the section of Bull Rock Road that goes from the State Road, or the old one, to the Foster's Point Road, okay, along that one that goes down and then belly back up. So the commercial zone that is southeast of that, like towards, um, the town hall, that setback was always three hundred feet, we have increased that in here to five hundred feet, so it just goes back a little further. We looked at the lots, there's only, I think, seven lots there, and two of them out of the seven, like two residential, and we had hearings, and, and no one had any opposition to that, so the actual commercial zoning is going to three hundred feet back from the center of the road, to five hundred feet back from the center of the road. Okay, so, and that's in this little piece too. Um, there was some more clarification of how we're referring to the actual, um, tax map, I'm sorry, the zoning map, it's usually hanging up downstairs at the town hall, uh, within here, uh, because of COVID, but, um, we had to refer to a specific way in here according to, uh, legal houses who changed that, so nothing real specific, it was clarifying, the only thing that was really, um, a change was that three hundred feet to the five hundred feet on that little strip along Bull Rock. And, uh, anybody have any questions?
Could everybody hear what, uh, Chairman Hennessy was saying?
Darlene.
Esteban.
Yep, it's okay. No second?
Any other questions or comments on Article thirty-five? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article thirty-five, please so indicate by raising your cards. Those in opposition, you pass Article thirty-five. Thirty-six, shall ordinance entitled twenty twenty amendments to the land use ordinance and the development review ordinance to make this lane numbering formatting a typographical error correction, shall be enacted. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion for Article thirty-six.
I'd like to explain that one, if I could.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, so what we've done is we're looking at the ordinance, and we found some issues that happened in the formatting. If you've ever worked in Word and had to do like an outline, where you've got a, a one, and then an A, and then a double I, and all that kind of stuff, and it's a real bear, and it gets messed up, right? So that's unfortunately what happened to our ordinance over time, we're not sure when, it doesn't matter. Um, so basically, that is a blanket thing that we have to do to have you prove the fact that we're going to go back and fix that. It doesn't change any of the content, it doesn't move anything, it doesn't delete anything, it just changes how the formatting goes, and we're actually going to get rid of the auto formatting, and make it just hand cranked in there, so it doesn't ever do that again. Um, it was at the town hall, I think, I went through and circled it, I think we had like fifty-five pages worth, and then the table contents pages are wrong, so we're going to fix it all up and then, um, put it back on the website. But it's, it's not a content at all, it's just, you know, some of the references we're referring to the wrong section, because it was twelve, so it's thirteen, and just kind of cleanup, and that's all it is. Um, and I just want to say, if you guys are ever interested, all of our meetings are open to the public. We're going to do a bunch of, uh, ordinance workshops, I think, starting earlier this year, um, so look for those, they're always on the website, everyone's always open.
What day are you meeting?
Tuesdays, the second Tuesday of every month at six o'clock, I mean, a meeting at the fire station, because of the separation and everything, so that's our wrap. And if anyone ever wants to make a change to the ordinance, all they have to do is come to a meeting, come if you have information, some questions, we, we, look at all the addresses, section, now, your applicants for, um, towns, people, questions, and information type thing, so it's pretty, we kind of have to make it go to later zone, we agree.
Thank you, Madam Pennyworth, thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article thirty-five? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate.
Thirty-six.
It's okay.
I apologize, you've already done thirty-five. Article thirty-six, and these are the formatting changes that the Pennyworth Chairman just mentioned. All those in favor? In opposition? You pass Article thirty-six, excuse my error. Thirty-seven.
Move to indefinitely postpone?
Article thirty-seven is an article to increase the town's property tax levy limit in the state law, um, I'm informed that that won't be necessary, and so the chairman of the selectmen, Miss Hennessy, did I get that right?
Yes.
I'm one for two. Um, it said that's not going to be necessary, and so if in order to kill this, or do away with it, a motion to indefinitely postpone is in order, and she has made that, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article thirty-seven? Seeing none, all those in favor of indefinitely postponing? Those in opposition, you have voted to definitely postpone thirty-seven. Next, everybody, we start on the West Bath school expenses. First article there is Article thirty, we have, the chairman of the school board is here?
Correct.
Article thirty-eight, to see what some will now vote to authorize the school board directors to expand for regular instruction. The recommendation is on the face of the warrant, is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article thirty-eight? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, you pass Article thirty-eight. Thirty-nine, to see what some will now vote to authorize the school board directors to expand for special education. The school board's recommendations on the face of the warrant, is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article thirty-nine? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. In opposition, you pass Article thirty-nine. Forty, to see what some will now vote to authorize the school board directors to expand for careers and technical education. The board of, the school board recommends zero. Is there a motion to approve Article forty, it's been on the face of the warrant?
Move.
A second? Any discussion? It would be appropriate that there be none. Want to come to the mic, so we can hear?
Sure.
If we're on Article forty, with a zero recommendation, zero of your name and your comments.
David Hennessy?
Yep.
Just wanted to thank the school board in two parts, for all the efforts to make the school budget increase zero. They worked very hard at it, it was a tough year for them, and it's going to be a tough year going forward, and there's budget tree difference and flexibility to use their budget numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Another question or comment? You didn't want to cut anybody off? Yes, ma'am. I got, I thought, I thought I got a good message.
I'm still running, yes. I, I just wondered, um, why there's no career in technical education, or what it would be, isn't that what we would be paying for at one of the high schools or middle schools?
It is, we don't maintain our own technical schools, so these expenses would have been in Article thirty-eight, that we already approved as part of the tuition.
Oh, okay.
Further questions or comments on Article forty? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, pass Article forty. Forty-one, to see what some will now vote to authorize the school board directors to expand for other instruction. The school board recommends forty-five hundred dollars, is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion on Article forty-one. Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, pass Article forty-one, put it in the warrant. I think the next hundred of these are going to go fast, so, Mary Lee. Article forty-two, to see what some will now vote to authorize the school board directors to expand for student and staff support, the school board recommendation on the face of the warrant, is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments on Article forty-two? Seeing none, all those in favor, please so indicate. Those in opposition, pass Article forty-two, put it in the warrant. Forty-three, to see what some will now vote to authorize the school board directors to expand for system administration, school board recommendations on the face of the warrant, is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
We have.
Discussion on Article forty-three. Discussion on Article forty-three. Seeing none, all those who favor please so indicate. Those in opposition, you've passed Article forty-three. Forty-four, to see what some of the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expand for school administration. The school board recommendation is on the face of the warrant. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion on Article forty-four? Seeing none, whoops.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir?
No, I was, I was going early.
Oh.
I have a question. I have a question.
I'm here, I'm here.
Yes, ma'am. Into the mic. We're on Article forty-four.
Deborah Henderson. Are there any police officers included in any of these causes?
Uh, the school does not have a school resource officer, no.
Other questions or comments on Article forty-four? Seeing none, all those who favor please so indicate. Those in opposition, passed Article forty-four. Forty-five, to see what some of the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expand for transportation. School board recommendations on the face of the warrant. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second? Discussion on Article forty-five. Seeing none, all those who favor please so indicate. Those in opposition, passed Article forty-five. All right, forty-six, to see what some of the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expand for facilities made, school board recommendation on the face of the warrant. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article forty-six? Seeing none, all those who favor please so indicate. Those in opposition, passed Article forty-six. Forty-seven, to see what some of the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expand for debt, service, and other commitments. School board recommendation is zero. Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion on Article forty-seven. Seeing none, all those who favor please so indicate. Those in opposition, passed forty-seven. Forty-eight, to see what some of the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to, to expand for other expenditures, including food services. School board recommends thirty-five thousand dollars.
No.
Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second? Any discussion on Article forty-eight? Seeing none, all those who favor Article forty-eight, please so indicate. Those in opposition, you've passed Article forty-eight. Forty-nine, to see what some of the town will vote to appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the essential programs and services funding act, and to see what some of the town will rate and assess as a municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in accordance with the main revised statutes Title twenty-eight, Section fifteen, six, eighty-eight. And the school board recommendation is on the face of the warrant, as is the, uh, oh, the total progress and the total rate. Is there a motion on Article forty-nine?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on Article forty-nine? Somebody?
Any discussion on it?
Yes.
Let's hear about the funding for it.
Article forty-nine.
Did not hear the question.
She wants to know a general explanation of the purpose of this article. Generally speaking, uh, the state has a bizarre, convoluted, uh, J, highly outdated, uh, funding formula. And, and part of that is what they consider essential programs. And so they throw all those essential programs in there and say, the number should be X. And in our case, it's that top, it's that top number, uh, you listed here. And then based on that, they tell you a certain amount that the local community has to raise before any state subsidy would kick in, and that's the second number listed on the warrant. And there are, there are a number of key mandated programs, uh, the state mandates we provide that aren't part of this formula, even though they're mandated.
Further questions or comments on Article forty-nine? Seeing none, all those who favor please so indicate. Those in opposition, you've passed Article forty-nine. Fifty. To see what some of the town will vote to raise and appropriate in addition to local funds, the school board of directors recommends one million one hundred seventy-seven thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty cents, which exceeds the state's central program and services allocation model by the school board of direct, school board of directors recommends one million one hundred forty-two thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty cents as required to fund the budget recommended by the school board of directors. The school board recommendation is on the face of the warrant. Is there a motion for Article fifty?
No.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Article fifty, put it on the face of the warrant. Any discussion?
Wait, I thought that was a group battle?
No, we, as a part of the state's response to the COVID crisis, um, that, that's been waiting.
So why do I have to help?
Because I was not informed of that part.
Oh, because the court said she wasn't, so.
Sorry.
Okay, Article fifty. Any questions or comments?
I'll just clarify that this is all that other stuff that's not included in the essential funds and programs, things like transportation and special ed, the state mandates we provide, but it's not part of their essential formula.
Further questions or comments on Article fifty? Seeing none, all those who favor please so indicate. Those in opposition, you've passed Article fifty, put it in the warrant. Fifty-one, to see what some of the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to expand for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand twenty, and ending on June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, for the municipal school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the essential programs and services funding act, non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the main revised statute Title twenty-eight, Section fifteen, six, ninety, undesignated fund balance, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts of support for schools. The school board recommendation is on the face and valid. Is there a motion for Article fifty-one?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on Article fifty-one?
This, this purely just summarizes, uh, and, and gives the final total for everything we've already passed in the previous articles. It's, it's not additional, uh, additional expenditure.
And that's with three point nine million dollars.
Correct.
Further questions or comments on Article fifty-one? Yes, sir.
I just, I'm kind of curious.
Can you give, can you give it to me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy Doc.
Here.
I just wondered, you know, when you did the budget, was it based on the nor, you know, normalcy that we had before March? And, you know, now from, you know, the, the end of June until next, you know, June.
Sure.
Is that going to affect the budget a lot or not? Or how do you, how do you deal with that?
Sure, uh, y- y- yes, initially we had started, uh, in, in the normal, uh, world, if you will. Uh, we were fortunate to some extent with the timing and, uh, went into COVID mode, uh, pretty quickly after that first draft had gone to our finance committee. Uh, we blew it up, started over again based on, uh, what we would anticipate, uh, being the guidelines, uh, for opening school, uh, next week. Uh, there is some, uh, unknowns, uh, that are still out there, uh, which is one of the reasons we have a couple other warrant articles coming up down, down there. But the board's fairly confident that this number, uh, we can make work.
And how many special ed, um, children, grades K through five, um, does the West Bath School support? What's the number this year? I know it changes every year.
Twenty-four and twenty-six.
Twenty-four to twenty-six.
Okay.
Other questions or comments on Article fifty-one, it's on the face of the warrant? Seeing none, all those who favor please so indicate. Those in opposition, passed Article fifty-one. Fifty. Two. Yeah, I was waiting. To see if the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to transfer amounts exceeding five percent of the total appropriation for any cost center to another cost center or among other cost centers for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one fiscal year, provided that transfers shall not be committed to increase the authorized total school budget. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments on fifty-two? Seeing none, all those who favor please so indicate. Those in opposition, you've passed Article fifty-two. Fifty-three, in addition to the amounts in Article fifty-one, the see if the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to accept and expand any state, federal, and other grants, aid, and receipt during the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand twenty, and ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-one for school purposes, provided that such grants, aid, and receipts do not require expenditure of other local funds not previously approved. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Yes. Second.
Second. Questions on Article fifty-three? Yes. Oh, you're right about that. We, we were wondering who's going to buy the pizza and beer after the night. You collected yourself. Article fifty-three, questions or comments on the merits? Seeing none, all those who favor Article fifty-three, please so indicate. Those in opposition, you've passed Article fifty-three. Fifty-four, see if the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to establish a non-lapsing school contingency reserve fund under the authority of Title twenty-eight, Section twenty-three oh seven and fourteen ninety-one of the main revised statutes, to transfer up to sixty thousand dollars from the existing special education reserve fund to that new contingency reserve fund, and to expend amounts in the contingency reserve fund for COVID-nineteen related or other emergency unanticipated or legally required costs, cost center expenditures not included in the operating budget but identified by the school board of directors as necessary or advisable. Is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Discussion on Article fifty-four? Seeing none, all those who favor Article fifty-four, so indicate. Those in opposition, you've passed Article fifty-four. Fifty-five, in the event the town receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget, to see if the town will vote to authorize the school board of directors to use all or part of the additional state subsidy to increase expenditures for school purposes in cost center categories approved by the school board of directors, increase the allocation of finance and reserve fund. Is there, oh, a reserve fund approved? You do this like, it's hard to do. Uh, approved by the school board of directors and/or decrease the total cost share expectation as defined in Title twenty-eight, Section fifteen, six, seventy-one, A, for N B, for N, for N one, for N B, for local partnerships for funding public education as approved by the school board of directors. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Discussion on this article? Seeing none, all those who favor so indicate. Those in opposition, you've passed Article, put it in the face of the warrant. I'll send a motion to adjourn.
No, no.
Is there a second? I'll defend the discussion. Turn back the stage and so we can. Thank you. We're adjourned.